Good evening, welcome to the county commissioners' meeting tonight, June 10th. I'd like to welcome everyone, thank you for coming out. We do have quite a packed agenda tonight, so we're gonna start working through it as quickly as possible. But first, I'd like to invite Commissioner Allman for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, thank you for this time that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the great community that we live in, thank you for this country that we live in. Father, tonight I lift up all the commissioners up here, and I pray for discernment, I pray for leadership, and I just ask that you just give us wisdom tonight, and let us do your will. Father, I lift up our first responders, and all our county employees, and all our citizens, Lord, and I just pray that we do what's best for the people tonight, and I pray also in Jesus' name, amen.
(Inaudible)
Thank you, Commissioner Allman. Does anybody have any additions or adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, can we get a motion for approval? Motion by Commissioner Allman, is there a second? Second, Commissioner Lawhan, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number one on tonight's agenda is a public hearing for Eastside Volunteer Fire Department to receive approval for tax exempt financing. This is kind of a repeat, we found out there was an issue with the public here, or the public notice the first time, so we wanted to make sure it was done correctly. Mr. Neal Center?
Yes, I am Neal Center, and I'm here on behalf of Eastside Volunteer Fire Department. They are requesting tax exempt financing, in the amount of $1.6 million. As you know, their existing facility, I guess was purchased by the state with the highway project that's going on, 2427. This will replace that, and U.R.E. Bank has approved the request, and offered them a 20-year fixed rate. I guess at this time, I'll take any questions that you have regarding the project.
Thank you, Mr. Center. Anybody have any questions? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against the public financing? For or against? Alright, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? Alright, there is a motion from Commissioner Lawhan, a second by Commissioner Morgan, to approve the issuance of a note to Eastside Volunteer Fire Department from U.R.E. Bank, designating such note as a qualified tax exempt obligation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Center. Item number two tonight is a resolution supporting juvenile crime prevention council allocation expansion. Ms. DeSantis?
That's it, DeSantis. Hello. As I said, my name's Jackie DeSantis, and most of you know me, because I'm your Health and Human Services Attorney also. Unfortunately, well fortunately, I got the great opportunity to be JCPC Chair for the local Stanley County JCPC Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. So, back in May, I think we presented our $1,000 administrative budget, and you all approved the people that were on the board at that time. At this time, that's a resolution, it's just, they want to get all 100 counties in the state to participate in a signed resolution stating that JCPC needs more funding. Stanley County has received $174,000 for as long as I can remember, like 10 years, and I've been on this council, either in a lead role, or as just a member, for probably 15 years. Anyway, they use the money to do programs to stop at youth risk, or children that are in trouble of going into the juvenile crime prevention system, or going to court. So that money's used for those programs. Right now, they're existing, well, starting in the fall, there'll be five programs. Some of those are programs that we've had, such as juvenile restitution, stable relationships was one from last year, YDI Youth Development Initiative, and that $174,000 actually gives them money to support their programs. The numbers of youth that are coming into the system have reduced drastically over the years, based on what we believe are those programs. Well fortunately, we became the last state to adopt a plan where now 18-year-olds, up to 18, once they hit 18, they go to the adult system, but now 16 and 17-year-olds will now be flooded into the juvenile system. Because of that, there is a need for money to support programs, to keep them out of centers. And if you can keep a kid, as you all know, I know you see the jail budget, if you have somebody doing probation, or parole, rather than in jail or prison, you know the cost savings there, there's huge cost savings there. This is to get the kids before they go into YDI. The population of YDI has dramatically just dropped since about 1998, because of what we believe is all these programs. So although it doesn't really cost you guys any money, we're asking that the federal people increase that budget, which I think is now like $21 million or something? And so what we're doing is we're asking each county to sign a resolution saying, yes, you would like to support that, that the federal government needs to give more money to these programs to keep the kids out of youth, and to prevent 17-year-olds, 16 and 17-year-olds who are now in, who will now be in the juvenile justice system, from headed that direction also. And that was really all I have to say, and I'm just asking that you all sign the resolution to, just to present, they're presenting them obviously to the North Carolina Representatives, hoping that we can get more money into the system, into the juvenile justice system, and in particular to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council programs, to sponsor more programs. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, thank you. What's the pleasure of the board? Motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item three tonight is the approval of the Aging Funding Plan for Stanley County. Ms. Wehmoff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present to you tonight our Aging Funding Plan. And what this plan is, is basically, it takes our Home and Community Care Block grant funds that fund our aging programs in our department. We create a budget, and this becomes our Aging Funding Plan for next year. The aging programs that this budget funds are in-home services Level 1 and Level 2, congregant nutrition, home-delivered meals, general transportation, medical transportation, and senior center operations. This year, we will be receiving $448,582 in grant funds. This is about $651 less than we got last year. But if you look at that divided by 12 months, it's not a sizable amount of money, but we do hate to get any type of decrease in this funding each year. We do have a board that meets, it's called the HCCBG Board, and they meet, and they look at our funding, they discuss the different programs, where our needs might be, and they vote to distribute these fundings among these aging programs. They also develop a contingency plan, in case we get, hopefully, increases during the year in this funding. Right now, there's not been any rumors that this would happen, but there's that possibility, and it's always unexpected, but greatly appreciated if we do get an increase. But anyway, this is a board that, excuse me, that meets to discuss this, and they vote on actually distributing the funds. Alright, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from board members?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lawhan?
Ms. Wehmoff?
Yes.
Do these funds come through Central Carolina Council of Government?
They do. They are mainly federal and state funds, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? What's the pleasure of the board, then?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the meeting schedule be changed as stated by Ms. Wehmoff, to quarterly meeting times.
Mr. Allman, a motion by Commissioner Allman, second by Commissioner, was that Jordan? Barbie. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Yep, I do.
Item number five, naming a new classroom at the senior center.
Right, and it's always a pleasure to be able to present this kind of information to the board. Back in late 2017, Tom and Jean Raby, who are very familiar folks in the area, donated a substantial amount of money to the senior center, with the stipulation that it be used for capital projects and improvements. And in my conversations with Mr. Raby, it was, we pretty well decided that one of the capital improvements that we wanted to do, and that he and his wife were willing to fund, was a renovation of the senior center kitchen. It's in the back of the building. It's been used mainly for storage, and anyway, for those that may remember when it was a kitchen, and when it was an armory, then we've come a long ways. Anyway, using their donation, this room has been renovated, and it will be a new classroom for us. It is almost finished, and it will be ready to be used by the citizens at the end of June, and we do hope to have a dedication ceremony in July, and I would love for all of you to be able to attend. And when I got here tonight, I did not realize that a member of the Raby family was here. So Gerald Pucklin, he is Tom and Jean Raby's son-in-law, he happened to be here, so I hope you'll carry our thanks back to them. Unfortunately, Mr. Raby passed away about 10 months ago, but his wife is still alive, and just kicking, and still has the wit that she's always had, for those of you who know her. So, I'm requesting that this new classroom be named the Tom and Jean Raby Room, in honor of their very generous gift to the senior center.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lawhan?
I'd like to make the motion that the classroom be named in honor of Tom and Jean Raby. I have known Tom and Jean Raby since I was six years old, and they are fine, fine individuals. I hate that, Tom lived a long life, but he was strong up until the last few days, but they are good people, and I feel honored to be able to make the recommendation on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Well, we feel honored just to have a room named after them.
I'll second that, and I as well have known Tom since I was a little kid. Him and my father were business partners, so I've known both of them for a long time.
Alright, we do have a motion from Commissioner Lawhan to approve the classroom naming to the Tom and Jean Raby Room, second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Yep, I do.
Item number five, naming a new classroom at the senior center.
Right, and it's always a pleasure to be able to present this kind of information to the board. Back in late 2017, Tom and Jean Raby, who are very familiar folks in the area, donated a substantial amount of money to the senior center, with the stipulation that it be used for capital projects and improvements. And in my conversations with Mr. Raby, it was, we pretty well decided that one of the capital improvements that we wanted to do, and that he and his wife were willing to fund, was a renovation of the senior center kitchen. It's in the back of the building. It's been used mainly for storage, and anyway, for those that may remember when it was a kitchen, and when it was an armory, then we've come a long ways. Anyway, using their donation, this room has been renovated, and it will be a new classroom for us. It is almost finished, and it will be ready to be used by the citizens at the end of June, and we do hope to have a dedication ceremony in July, and I would love for all of you to be able to attend. And when I got here tonight, I did not realize that a member of the Raby family was here. So Gerald Pucklin, he is Tom and Jean Raby's son-in-law, he happened to be here, so I hope you'll carry our thanks back to them. Unfortunately, Mr. Raby passed away about 10 months ago, but his wife is still alive, and just kicking, and still has the wit that she's always had, for those of you who know her. So, I'm requesting that this new classroom be named the Tom and Jean Raby Room, in honor of their very generous gift to the senior center.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lawhan?
I'd like to make the motion that the classroom be named in honor of Tom and Jean Raby. I have known Tom and Jean Raby since I was six years old, and they are fine, fine individuals. I hate that, Tom lived a long life, but he was strong up until the last few days, but they are good people, and I feel honored to be able to make the recommendation on behalf of the board.
Thank you. Well, we feel honored just to have a room named after them.
I'll second that, and I as well have known Tom since I was a little kid. Him and my father were business partners, so I've known both of them for a long time.
Alright, we do have a motion from Commissioner Lawhan to approve the classroom naming to the Tom and Jean Raby Room, second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. Thank you.
Item number six is EMS Design Build Guaranteed Maximum Price. Presenter, County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A few months ago, the board approved, moving forward with the design build of the new AMS base in the east side of town, the corner of Hillco and Bernard. And at that point in time, the contractor went out and began their work to develop a guaranteed maximum price for that project. We received that information, there's actually, you can see the rendering here in front of you, we received that information this eve, or on late last week, and the construction budget is 2.634 million. That does include a $113,000, almost $114,000 contingency line on them. It's estimated that our debt service would be $190,000 on a, that assumes a 20-year loan with a 3.75 interest rate. It's possible that we may be able to get better than that. And if you back out the $20,000 we're currently paying to lease our facility in Bethany, the new fiscal impact to the county in the year 2021 would be $170,000 for that debt service. We're also gonna ask the board to reappropriate $42,500 that won't be spent this fiscal year that was designated for that project back in 1819. We'll do that as part of the year-end, well actually, as part of the next year's budget process, when we do the budget ordinance. And that'll allow us to fund the purchase of furniture and appliances for the new facility. Lastly, I want to know, I know there's an itemized list in here, and they've listed some contractors. Those contractors that are listed there are not the contractors who are necessarily doing the work on this project. They were simply the contractors that D.R. Reynolds reached out to, to get information so they could put a guaranteed maximum price on the project. So what they'll do, once we give them the go-ahead, that we're moving forward with this, they'll actually put it out to bid to these contractors, and so it's very likely that there'll be additional local folks, or these local folks that are on here, would hopefully continue to get that work. So I wanted to reassure the board that these aren't final, this isn't the final list of contractors, these are just contractors they used to get pricing for their guaranteed maximum price. And what that basically means is that that price is locked in at 2.6. If there's savings, we share in that saving. So if they go back and bid this to these contractors, and there's savings in that, and we don't run through our contingency, and there's money left at the project, we, us and the contractors, share in that savings, and it goes back to the county. So, we're asking the board tonight to authorize staff to move forward with securing bank bids for this financing, and submitting an application to the local government commission. This would likely be on the local government commission's August agenda, because you have to give them 30 days advance, and so we wouldn't be able to hit their July agenda at this point, but their August agenda, and get approval, and then we would close the loan and start to initiate the project. So, that's the requested action this evening, is to move forward with seeking bank bids, and as well as submitting the application for financing to the local government commission. You'll see a resolution, if you do approve this this evening, you'll see a resolution at our July meeting for the financing, and you would also see the bank bids information as well in approving those. So, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Questions for the county manager?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question. Mr. Manager, you understand the $20,000 that we're leasing, which reduces the debt coverage or debt amount to $170,000 per year. How does that $170,000 additional debt, I guess my question should be, what will the county's overall debt ratio, debt coverage ratio be after that's added?
Will still be well below the national benchmarks for debt coverage ratio. I don't have the debt coverage ratio in front of me, but we're, our debt coverage ratio is rather low. I mean, I know that there was some analysis done by the community college not too long ago about them building a building, and then included our debt service ratio information, and we fare very well. I mean, and I'm not necessarily concerned with that $170,000 increase, I think we can certainly absorb that from growth revenue, as long as we have growth revenue and tax base. At the end of the day, we need this new base. I mean, we're leasing a facility that we constantly have to repair, it's not in good shape, our employees are in, are having to sleep, and basically reside in a subpar facility. And I think it's, you know, this project was actually on the board, in the board's budget in 2008, 2009, when I got here. And we tabled it in '08, when the recession hit, and this is finally, I mean, we're 11 years later, and we're finally gonna get to this process. I just firmly believe it's, you know, this is a project we need to do. From a debt service capacity, we have the ability, our number is very much in line, if not lower, than the national benchmarks for debt service coverage.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Not, how do we want to move forward? Mr. Chairman? Mr. Morgan?
With the motion that we authorized staff to move forward with seeking the bank bids, financing associated with the project, and submit a financing application to the local government commission.
We have a motion by Commissioner Morgan, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number seven tonight is a public hearing for Greenfield Road renaming. Mr. Melton?
Good evening, Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Submitted for your consideration this evening is a proposal to name a new road off of Mission Church Road. The information is in the packet that's been submitted to you folks there, and if you have any questions about that, I'm available to answer those for you.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Melton, I looked through this information. How many residents voted to name this road the proposed name? I could not find it.
Yes, sir, there were three residents that voted on this. There was actually some confusion about this issue early on in the process. One of the employees that worked for my department that's no longer with us incorrectly ascertained that this road would abut the back of the residents that run off of Mission Church. And so initially, those residents were given a vote in this process, and then we later on discovered that actually they were not entitled to a vote in the process, because the road goes deeper into the property, and the road, the land on both sides of the road was owned by one individual, and none of those folks own Mission Church, actually abut the process. So we backed up, started the process over, and only included the three residences, the Ingles, the Wells, and the Castin gays, who were entitled to a vote on the project.
And how did that vote come out?
That vote, we spoke with Mr. Wells there, he spoke with the Ingles, I'm sorry, I spoke with Mr. Engel, and he spoke with the Wells and the Castin gays, and they were in agreement on the Greenfield Road address, naming of the road.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Three votes back, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Like I said, the process here, we went through the process, we actually mailed out letters on two different occasions to folks there. We originally sent out letters to just the three folks, then the employee thought that the other folks should be involved in the process, another round of letters were sent out, and by that point, we had already, the folks were a little frustrated with the process, we had gone on for quite some time there. So we spoke to the folks involved there, Mr. Ingles, he owns most of the land there, involved. The Castin gays had an easement that came off of there, and their driveway runs off of it there, and so they were all in agreement on the road name moving forward.
I was kinda confused, because it looks like you got three votes back, one voted for Pearl's Place, another for Indy Lane, and then one for Greenfield, so that's a three-way tie, as far as I'm concerned. So, how'd you come up with Greenfield Lane?
Yes, sir. Well, the Greenfield Road, at that point there, like I said, the process there had gotten kind of a little involved there at that point. They had come up with the three names there. Mr. Ingles went back and spoke to them, and asked them if they had any objections to the Greenfield Road name, because under the county ordinance at that point, if there is a tie, then it would become up to the address coordinator to break that tie, and decide on which of the names to move forward. So the three parties agreeing to that name was done verbally there, after the three votes for three different names were submitted.
Mr. Melton, I think the confusion, first let me, are any of those parties, the three parties he's referencing here tonight? Okay. I think the confusion is, is that these signature sheets that I'm looking at, and maybe I've got something out of order, don't have any of the names on them that you're referencing. I see Greenfield Road, but I don't see a Mr. Ingles with a signature sheet. That's, I see a lot of people, I have a sheet that says Gibson, Love, Strutz, Stutz, Udi, and Bigford.
Yes, sir, those are the residents that, whose properties face Mission Church, who were initially given a vote in the process, in that second round of voting, that were not entitled to a vote in the process.
Okay. And I think what I'm missing is the sheet that you're referencing, because I don't see it, unless anybody else. Did Mr. Engel ever send a sheet in, or was it all verbal?
Let me just get top of my notes here real quick. Yes, sir, I don't appear to have that sheet in front of me here now. We did receive one from Mr. Engel there, in reference to it there, but I don't seem to have that with me here tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would make the motion that we table this particular naming until we have signed sheets by those people that you talked about.
Okay. Mr. Melton, is there any way, if we do that motion, is there any way you could have that to us at one of our recesses?
You're gonna have to do another public hearing.
Oh, okay, we'll see that one in July.
Okay.
There is a motion to table on the floor, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Allman, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Second public hearing is for Olympic Lane. Mr. Melton?
Yes, this is a proposal to name a new road off of South Cobble Avenue in Oakboro, and name the road Olympic Lane. This is a single, this is a, there's one owner that owns all the land off of this road, and he is developing duplexes off of that road. There's, currently I believe that there's two that's finished construction, and two more under construction, and plans for several more, which would necessitate- more under construction, and plans for several more, which would necessitate naming, naming the road with all those duplexes on it. The only property owner that was entitled to a vote in this case there is Mr. John Teal, and he voted for Olympic Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Any questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Jordan?
Mr. Melton, in the note here, sent to you from John Teal, I'm going to draw your attention to the last paragraph. "Per our conversation, my concern is at some point in the future, there will be a demand that the Rocky River Storage changes address from 228 South Cobal to the name of the new private drive. I trust you promise that this will not be an issue that we will face." When I look at the map, it looks like the driveway that is currently not named is going to be on the new road. That address would change to Olympic Lane, otherwise it wouldn't make any sense. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The Rocky River Storage, the buildings, they run parallel to South Cobal Lane. The, the majority of the frontage of the property there faces South Cobal, and the business has been in operation for years with that address. I explained to Mr. Teal that normally what we would do with that, with the naming of the new road off of there, and with the driveway of his business running off of there, that it normally would necessitate renaming, renumbering his business. He was adamantly opposed to that, and I told him, I said, well, there's actually, with all the frontage that you have on South Cobal, if you had a dump load of gravel and came up there and just, and put a driveway off of South Cobal there, then that would preserve, there was, there was an easy fix around that there. He was opposed to the naming of the road as well. He did not want to name the road. He wanted to keep it a private driveway, but we explained to him with the number of duplexes that were going to be going in there, that the current numbering system that the county uses there of numbering, of keeping the same number, and then lettering each of those buildings would be, would not be feasible for emergency services. We couldn't have a proper-
Otherwise, he would be, he would be 228A, and then you would have B through Z, and then you're out of options.
Exactly. And depending, and he, he had enough space back there to build enough duplexes to where we would run out of letters, and plus, we just didn't want to have the situation where each of these duplexes would have the same number, but different letters. So you'd have, you know, A and B for one, and you have R and S a half mile down the road. So, so we felt very strongly that the road needed to be named, but he was very adamant about not wanting to change the, the name of his business. And since there was a relatively easy workaround to where he could purchase this gravel, cut this new driveway there, we felt that it was a reasonable accommodation to make to him at this time, to allow him to keep his address there that he's had in, in use for business for years, and he would remove his objection to naming the road, and we could move forward.
As someone that had their address changed, whether I wanted to or not, I can relate to that frustration, but I'm just going to ask, does that cause any problem for 911 or for emergency services? I mean, it's the actual address that you're servicing. If he cuts in gravel, that's fine, but the mail, post office, and everybody else is still going to that road, that old driveway, I assume.
Well, that was one of the, the conditions that Mr. Teal agreed to, was that I made it perfectly abundantly clear to him, that if he was adamant about keeping that address, that that building would have to be properly lettered and be very clear to responding units as they come in on South Cobal, that this was that address on South Cobal, so that they could, could readily identify it, and it would not delay any emergency services. And he was agreeable to that.
Mr. Melton, you said he was agreeable to it, was it agreeable in writing or just verbal?
As far as the numbering of the building?
No, as far as what? You know, he totally goes, puts the gravel down, puts the road in, to keep the address. Is that in writing, or is that just?
No, sir. That, that is not in writing. I just explained to him that that was an option that was available to him if he was adamant about keeping the road, that that was a method that was available to him that would correspond with the county's naming and numbering ordinance, and would basically take the decision out of our hands at that point.
Any other questions? No other questions. I'll go ahead and, was, was he satisfied with that answer?
He, he had, he had some concerns. I believe he's, he's here-
I'm going to open the public hearing, and then you can-
He had some concerns about that. He expressed to me that my decision was only as good as, as long as I was in office, and he was concerned that if I left office and someone else came in, that they would make another decision, and that he would be forced to renumber his, his, his business. And I explained to him at that time that, at, at that point, then that was, that might be when you'd want to exercise that gravel option.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Are there any other questions? All right, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for? Come on up.
My name is John Teal. I'm the owner of the property in question. It's about 13 acres there, and it consists currently of, of about 40,000 square feet of storage buildings, and I have the, currently, we've been approved to do up to 10 duplex buildings, 20 units, you could probably do more in Phase Two. As far as putting any type of gravel down, if anybody's been to the property, everything's paved there, and it's, it's not something we put gravel in at a drive, we wouldn't, that's not something I would even consider. I have a good working relationship with Mr. Melton. We discussed it. I have absolutely no issue with renaming the street. I didn't think it was in the best, I didn't think it was the best option, but I understand you've got rules and regulations, so we have no choice really in that. But as far as my concern is with Mr. Melton, if he does leave, someone comes up to me and says, well, you need to change your address to the Olympic Lane, and for now, 13 years, I've had an address with Cobal Avenue. And that, probably not that big of a deal, but for a business, it can be, it can cause some issues. And I don't think anybody in Oakboro knows Olympic Lane. Not many people know Cobal Avenue, but it's so small, there's two houses on it other than my business.
I'll go ahead and tell you, it's going to take UPS six years to find you.
They usually don't. But no issues with naming the street or anything like that. I just don't want to get in a predicament later. My property's not the type of property you go and lay gravel on. It's, it's fairly, I've tried to do everything nice and make it as nice as possible.
I don't know what our fiscal problems have been regarding, but I'm in a position, I just want to get this one, but graduate is on Olympic Lane, you're for Greenfield and then you don't want to claim it's on Cobal, on Cobal. If you, if you change it, and you have an issue, you're making an exception to your mayor, and if so, we'll be fine, we'll find a period ending that, but if you don't, you don't start that.
Let me, let me close the public hearing, and then we'll get to that. Is there anybody else to speak for or against? Mr. Morgan has a question for you real quick.
I was going to ask one question, because this only shows part of the bill. Is there a back entrance to this, or is this the only entrance?
The completed project will have two entrances, both on Cobal Avenue. It'll be like a circle. Currently, there's one entrance that goes in, and on the right-hand side are the storage buildings, about 1,900 square foot, two-story office building, and on the left are the duplexes.
But for the storage buildings, is that, is that the only entrance in?
On the Cobal Avenue, correct. Yeah, that's, that's Parker Motors on one end and a private owner on the back side.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak for or against? None, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Melton, where did he? Oh, there you are. I know Commissioner Jordan asked about a precedence. I know I used to live in a house with a Canton Road address, but you had to go down McSwain Road a couple hundred yards to get in my driveway. So I guess there is a precedence, because I used to live in one, but I don't know how that would work to give him some kind of peace of mind that we're not going to come back 13 or 14 years from now, and another board. Is there some way we can do that for him?
Well, like I said, I know that perhaps maybe the gravel was, as a, as an example, he might want to do something more permanent and something that would be more, more pleasing. But yes, if a, if a driveway was cut off of Cobal Avenue to access the, the business, then it's, the majority of that business faces Cobal Avenue anyway. So if the, if the access was changed at some point down the road, if someone else did come, come in later on and tell him he's going to have to change his address, then that would be an option that would be open to him to, to forestall that.
There's nothing we can do today to protect him from that?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, if, I, I would assume if, if the board, you know, chooses to, to grant some type of exemption there, I don't know what's in your power to, to grant. I don't have anything that's spelled out in the county's ordinance at this time that, that grants me the, the authority to give a exemption in perpetuity. All I can do is make the decision at the time that it is named or numbered. I have that authority with your approval at, at that time. But as far as, as putting something down that, that guarantees that, I'm not sure of a method to guarantee that.
Thank you. I guess you know the next question, Jenny?
What is your specific question?
Is there a way to guarantee that?
Um, I'm not sure. I'm looking at the ordinance as it exists. Mr. Melton may be able to address this quicker than I may, but I believe it is tradition that your address is based on the road that your driveway adjoints. And if we follow that previous method of doing things, I believe we would, if you want to be consistent with the ordinance, I would assume that Mr. Teal's business address should be changed to Olympic Lane. If you all wanted to make an exception to that, I would need to research how we would affectuate that from Mr. Teal.
If I could just add, in the normal course of, of my duties, I come across addresses that are not numbered and not named in a consistent basis that current, that matches the current ordinance. At various points in time, things have been done differently, different ways, different folks have come in, different directors, different database coordinators, and we do not make it a policy, we're, we're not going in there and looking for numbered houses and residences that have been misnumbered and trying to change those and make them correct moving forward. We pretty much, our policy is, if we discover some type of error that has crept into the process over the years, we generally incorporate that error into what we're doing moving forward, instead of trying, because what we don't want to do is to try to go in there and constantly be telling people that their address is changing. We recognize what a imposition that that puts on people, and we only want to try to do that in extreme situations where it really is necessary in order to maintain the integrity of the numbering system. So right now, the only assurance that I can offer Mr. Teal is that I, it would be tough to imagine that if some future director decided to come in here and decide to change his number, they would be opening up a can of worms, because there would be numerous instances to where they would need to do the same thing all across the county to be consistent.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Also, I would say that some of this is common sense. I mean, if we, if we, you know, were takes action on this, you know, we've got the minutes that say, hey, we, we had the understanding that we need this Olympic Lane, just from a, from an emergency response perspective. I mean, it, it makes sense to want to make sure that EMS or fire, whoever, can get there and know exactly where this is, instead of trying to fish through an A or B, a Z or W. But at the end of the day, if this comes up where, you know, a new director, or for whatever reason, something happens, I mean, I think you go back to the minutes and understand that, you know, the, the board's intent was to, you know, allow Mr. Teal to put in a driveway, whether that's gravel, or whether that's paved, or whether that's concrete, or whatever else he decides to, what other material he decides to use, that would allow him to have the address at Cobal, and, and access it directly from Cobal. So I would hope that whoever is, you know, in my position, or in Curtis' position, would exercise good judgment and, and do whatever the intent of the board was based on the minutes that were taken in. So I think, I hope that would relieve some of the fear that the board may have, and certainly Mr. Teal. I mean, it's, at the end of the day, it's, you know, using good common sense and, and good judgment on the part of being professional.
Thank you. Any manager?
Mr. Chairman? I just, I mean, the simple solution, could he not just put a mailbox out there with his numbers on it? I mean, wherever your mailbox, if his mailbox is on Cobal Avenue, well, he gets his mail there, building that-
The postal system requests the mailbox to be moved to the new street due to the danger of the hill and stopping up at the mail.
Well, and we decide to change the ordinance at some point down the road, we can put provisions in there, you know, to, to address that type of thing. But at this point, the, the ordinance is written to number and address where the driveway runs off of. So one of the reasons, like the county manager said, I, I looked at this from a common sense standpoint as well, from the request that Mr. Teal was making, the vast majority of the frontage of his, of his business faces Cobal Avenue. So responders looking for that address on Cobal Avenue, looking for his business, are going to expect it to have an address on Cobal Avenue. And so by having it clearly labeled and numbered and being able, and, and allowing him to keep the address that he's had for years, it actually enhances the ability for first responders to find him as well.
I do have a question. It looks like Olympic Lane is his current driveway. Looks like it'd be simpler just to move and have another Olympic Lane cut off.
Currently, that road is just a driveway. It's not named at all now.
Right, but I mean, just, you're going to leave his address is a simple solution, we just move and start another road called Olympic Lane beside his driveway.
That was going to be what I suggested. I mean, we, you made the comment that we, you know, we've had discrepancies between the ordinance and the reality in the past.
Yeah, I see, I see what you're saying now. Have, have Olympic Lane actually not be the driveway that's currently in use now? I'm not sure what's, I've not been out there physically in person to actually see the, the property. I'm not sure how feasible that is. Maybe Mr. Teal can, can address that.
I didn't realize we would have this much confusion. I probably should have brought an overhead picture for you. The, we've got this as part of your project, part of your documents here. When you turn in off of Cobal, you're automatically in the driveway for the business, and on the right-hand side of the, the storage facility and the office, to the left-hand side are the duplexes, the Olympic Lane starts when you turn off, the private drive is being given a name, Olympic, Olympic Lane. So there's no way, and there's nowhere to put a gravel drive or anything like that. You know, I'm thinking, I've got people ready to move in. I need to get an address, I'm being told, so I have really no choice. It's just, this was something when we first came up, I had an opinion of what I thought it should be, and went to the fire department and talked to them, but then the regulations and the county kind of messed the stipulation up. My thought was, we would continue to use the Cobal Avenue address and number each building, like 220 or 100 or whatever, AB, 102 AB, 104. We were told we couldn't do that. And even the fire department, the Rodney Urie, said he thought that made the most sense, but he didn't think it would meet the specifications. So I'm fine with a street name and all of that, and I'm just going to have to take my chances and trust the word, and if it ever comes up, just come to the parties that be here at that time and try to work it out. It's put too much effort into it. You guys got more important things than my street address to deal with, I'm sure, so I appreciate your time. So I'm fine with going with Olympic Lane. I trust Mr. Melton. He's been great to work with and tried to help us as much as possible, so I'm fine with whatever we decide, which I think it's Olympic Lane. And if it comes in the future, we need to deal with it, then I'll just, you know, attack it from that standpoint and go back to this time. But I've taken way too much time of you guys tonight, but I do appreciate everything.
Mr. Teal?
Yes, sir.
Would you feel more comfortable if we pass this and we give you a copy of the minutes?
That would be great, yeah. I would appreciate that.
Thank you.
Other questions? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion that we rename the road as presented with a copy of the minutes when they're complete to Mr. Teal.
Motion by Commissioner Lohon to name Olympic Lane and present a copy of the completed minutes after next month to Mr. Teal. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Motion carries seven to zero.
Of course.
All right, Mr. Melton, item number nine is a presentation on Rocky Branch Drive.
Yes, proposal to name a new road off of Highway 200 north to Rocky Branch Drive. This is, this is the property there that we, that we had some confusion about earlier as far as, as folks voting that were previously not entitled to. We had that situation here with this property here as well. You'll have a, one of the items in your packet there is a list of the property owners, and you'll see here the list here of the property owners that were initially contacted, and then the property owners that actually are entitled to the vote on the, on the matter.
So, we're naming Rocky Branch Road, or Rocky Branch Drive, and there should have been three voters, correct?
Yes, that is correct. And one of the items in your packet there is signed by all three of the parties. Yes, this list here, they had listed five road names in their order of preference, and the Rocky Branch Drive is the first in that list of, in order of preference.
In the page 61, it has Mr. Engel and it's talking about Greenfield Road, which is item seven. It's like they're kind of back and forth between the two.
Yes, sir. In the notes here, that they were, they were simply saying that they were wanting to try to get the Greenfield Road property at the same board meeting.
Any questions from the board? There should be a portion of, actually, it's page 64, packet page 64, that Mr. Melton is talking about, where the property owners, the three property owners that are in question here have signed a sheet of paper saying that they picked the name Rocky Branch Lane, or Rocky Branch Drive as their first choice. And all three of them have signed that. That's the current name that we're on. Are there any questions from the board? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against Rocky Branch Drive? For or against? Clear the public hearing closed. Any discussion from the board? Any other questions from the board? If not, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the proposed name of Rocky Branch Drive.
Motion by Commissioner Almond to approve Rocky Branch Drive. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Chairman, permission?
All right, there was, the names got switched in our agenda packets. That's what led to the confusion a little bit earlier. And I appreciate Mr. Melton kind of bearing with us as we kind of figured that out.
Thank you for your indulgence.
But we can actually go ahead and dispose of item number seven tonight if somebody would make a motion to reconsider.
I'll make the motion to reconsider.
All right. So, I have a motion to reconsider item number seven, public hearing for Greenfield Road. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. So, we are back to item number seven, Greenfield Road. Mr. Melton?
Yes, this is the road off of Mission Church. Letters were sent out. Originally, the, the name that was voted on by the residents was Duck Pond Road. We already had a duck pond in the county, so that name was denied. And the second choice that they, on their list that they had asked for was Greenfield Road, which was acceptable. And so, that's what we're asking the board to, to name the road.
All right. Any questions from the board? Ones I see are Love, Two Stuts, Udi, Bigford, and Gibson.
Yes, and those, those letters were sent out, and we received replies back from, from three of them. That's correct. That's correct.
And Commissioner Jordan, if you'll see in the back, page forty-seven and, forty-seven and forty-nine, there was another voter that had no name preference that was presented there. So, right. Any other questions from the board? If not, I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anybody here to speak for or against? For or against? See none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. What's the pleasure of the board? A motion by Commissioner Jordan to approve Greenfield Road. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Melton. Item number 10, Mr. Rimsberg, is a zoning request for Charles Harwood.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Good to see you this evening. Get the PowerPoint pulled up here. We'll have this. We have two cases before you tonight, and then a couple of board appointments, and we can discuss the, what we do with domestic animals maybe as we go through. But the first case is case number 1905. You had the memo in your packet from Dr. Ekman, the Chair of the Planning Board. This is, the first case is Charles Harwood and JRS Asset Management. They're requesting the rezoning of two lots, fairly small lots, with .2605, .3169 acres there on Highway Business, Business Highway 52 South, currently zoned highway commercial. And the request is to rezone them to, and I think I have in here RA, residential agricultural, but, but actually, the Planning Board switched this to make them for R10 as the request in the long run here. And I'll explain that in just a minute. These parcels were subdivided in 2009. Original tract had the two homes plus a small commercial building, which is down there at the corner of Duck and Highway 52 South Business. The subdivision placed the homes on separate lots and the commercial building on a third lot.
Allow, and I hope some of you see this, I've got, I have copies if you need it, but this is the current list of ordinance that we have, and it doesn't, it's not very complete, I guess, it's kind of limited in its scope, and really it only allows you to keep animals if you are in a, in the RA District, which is most of the county, the larger areas of county, the expanse, which is also the agricultural area of the county, or if you're in a residential area on a lot of five acres or larger, that'd be the R-20 District, they're not allowed in the R-10 District, R-8 District, or even the R-40 District is not very clear, I believe, about that, so, so you're limited potentially in some, where you can do domestic animals. So, can you have goats, can you have sheep, can you have, and we don't even address bees? So, there were several things that we probably needed to update and do that, so I've done some research, I will admit, and we, I talked with Commissioner Swain, Chairman, just a little while ago, and obviously we've got potentially some more tweaking to do on this, and I don't know where the Board may want to go with that, I'm very open to how we want to proceed here, but I proposed a whole new section, Mr. Sandy had reviewed this before, before he left, as a potential amendment to the ordinance, and addresses sections on goats and sheep, and chickens and other fowl, beekeeping, small mammals, large mammals, such as equine, bovine, and camelids, and then it even goes into large birds, and then of course the potential that you could use goats and sheep for vegetation removal, really in any district, on any land for a temporary situation with a permit, currently that's not allowed in some areas, and there are actually people that will lease you goats and sheep to take care of vegetation, I don't know of anyone in this county, but that's a trend that you see nationwide, because they're, as most of us know, they're pretty effective at cleaning out vegetation, so, we have this, it's fairly, in many ways it's more lenient, I guess, than the, than the previous parts, but other parts very closely mirror into the past ordinance as well, for what, for what it's worth, as I say, we did not address miniature horses, and I did have a gentleman contact me recently, wanting to look at putting miniature horses in the R-20 District, but that pretty much, it was on a lot that was less than five acres, so pretty much I was gonna have to tell him, no, you can't consider that, we may have to look carefully at miniature horses in the future, because they're considered, potentially considered service animal as well, that along with dogs, they're allowed as service animals, so something to consider, then again, we may have to look a little closer at that in the future, if someone needs them as a service animal, so I guess I'll leave that with you, and I don't know where the Board, and I'll answer any questions that I can about specifics, and where the Board may want to go, and we can send, look back at a few things at the Planning Board, I'm very much open to suggestions from the Board, or individually, to come to us and say, well, we ought to look closer at this, that, or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Rimsburg, I know the, the conversation that Mr. Rimsburg referred between the two of us, I shared a concern only about one section of that, I actually think the rest of it is fairly accurate, I did have some concern about the beekeeping section, we don't currently have ordinances, but I know several businesses that operate as businesses, and several beekeepers that operate fairly extensive beekeeping operations operate on fairly small lots, and that was where I had some concern, but I was gonna make a recommendation to the Board, and if the Board chooses to, to make a motion to that effect, was to, let's send this ordinance, let's send this work to the Cooperative Extension Office for review for the livestock part, and potentially send it to the Stanley Beekeepers' Association for some review and feedback from those guys, they're, they're more extensive in that than, than I'll probably ever be, but that was, that was my two concern areas, but that, that would be my recommendation, if somebody's willing to make a motion.
I would also like, I ran some of this past the Family County Veterinarian today for Board of Health, services all but one of these, they don't service birds, so she's not, she can't talk about exotics, but I would also say we run some of this past the Veterinarian on the Board of Health when it comes to best practices for the care of the animals, because I had a concern myself on the miniature horses, I later found that concern to be unfounded, but I like your idea, and I think bringing it past the vet couldn't hurt either.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jordan, I'd like to propose the motion that we table this, and we can get further input from the Agriculture Extension, Stanley County Beekeepers, and the Veterinarians.
There, there, there's one, there is, I hope, there've been obviously numerous versions of this, but I think the last version that was approved by the Planning Board indicated that if they're kept as indoor pets, primarily as indoor pets, then, then you can have a pot-bellied pig, or miniature pig type situation, but as an indoor pet, primarily, they can wander the yard some, but not, not, not being an outdoor thing.
All right, I do have a motion from Commissioner Barbie, to direct staff to send this ordinance out to several different organizations, and others as they see fit, and there's a second by Commissioner Jordan, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero.
I thank you for that, and we'll work our, to bring you back a more, more complete.
Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Rimsburg, it's a great start.
Mr. Chairman, would you call a five-minute recess, please?
I can, I'll declare us in recess for five minutes, it's about 7:45-ish. Call us back to order this evening, thank you for allowing us just a quick break there, before we moved on, that brings us to item number 13 this evening, Board Appointments from the Board of Adjustments, Mr. Rimsburg, once more.
Well, and before I start, I failed to mention, we have, Bailey Emrich is with us today, she is our new planner in the Planning Department, so it's good to have a, even an Anson County person that comes up and joins us here in Stanley County, so, thank you, Bailey, good to have you, we do have a couple appointments needed, the, and one kind of adjustment, you might say, we have an appointment that, I don't know how we got off, but we ended up with four terms expiring as of the end of June of this year, and really, it's a nine, it's a seven-member board with two alternates, so nine people, you divide that with, by three years, and you get, you should, or, you should have three per year, is what we should be doing, but somehow we ended up with four, I'm not sure how that happened, so one of my, our recommendations is to appoint one person at least for one year, to get us kind of back on track for that, so, as, as I think you've scott before you, the Board has two members that have served two terms, that's Buddy Clark and Michael Efferd, one member Billy Franklin Lee, who's currently an alternate, is eligible for reappointment, the terms expire, and then, so we need two regular members, one alternate, and then potentially one alternate that would serve until next year, if that makes sense, hope it does.
Thank you, Mr. Rimsburg, are there any questions? It's a pleasure of the Board this evening.
Mr. Clark and Mr. Efferd both are wonderful Board members, but they have served two terms, and so by the Commissioner rules, then generally they should not be reappointed, it's of course up to the Board, you can, I shouldn't say you can break your own rules, but you can, you can do as you desire, we don't have, don't have current applications from them, I imagine either one would potentially be willing to continue serving, because they've been, they've been very good Board members.
Could they be alternates?
Maybe I'll do a quick explanation, generally, you know, obviously, all nine members are encouraged to attend each meeting of the Board of Adjustment, we don't have that many meetings, but some of the actions, well, all, no, the only action that is a variance, a variance, if you have to approve a variance, the Board of Adjustment, it has to be approved by four-fifths vote, that state statute, which makes, creates a really odd situation, and if you have someone recuse themselves because they're, know that person, or it's their property, or some financial interest or something there, then, then suddenly you end up with a situation where those alternates are needed, so, actually, the alternates usually are encouraged to attend each meeting as well, not just the regular Board members, but especially if you know that there's gonna be an absence.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion, we table this till the next meeting? Here's a motion, a motion to table this, just to clarify, the next meeting, or recess?
If they table, you can, you can bring it up at the next recess meeting, or you could bring it up at the, if we didn't do it at a recess meeting, you could do it at the next regular meeting, as long as you do it within a hundred days, it's still, it's still eligible to be taken, acted on.
Right, and any, if we did have a Board meeting between now and the time that you approved this, then any current Board members would, would continue to serve until such time as a new appointment's made.
Thank you, so there's a motion to table until a future date, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr, is there any discussion?
Question, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rimsburg, can you contact those Board members to see if they're willing to serve again?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. All right, that brings us to the public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2019-20 recommended budget, that must be held legally prior to budget adoption, I intend to open the public hearing this evening, we will allow those that wish to address the Board, and the community as well, to speak for three minutes, we'll follow the public, public hearing policy, or public, public comment policy for this session, but I'll now declare the public hearing open, is there anybody that is here to speak on behalf of the budget? Mr. Shudo.
I'm used to three-minute public hearings, anyway, it's okay, you can all start it, I'm passing out some handouts to make it quicker and stuff, and real quick, the reason I'm here is I did a presentation to some of y'all about a year ago, and I forwarded that to County Manager Andy Lucas, he's gonna forward it to you guys, that has information on schools, and this is basically, as I saw the Stanley News and Press, when I read the, saw the article about 31 school teachers may not be, they may not be able to hire 31 school teachers next year, and they, their capital improvement fund, they may cut $500,000 from it, and, you know, it's funny, you, they mentioned they cut 31, could cut 31 teachers, but where's the outrage? But you talk about consolidating a school, and people run you out of town, and real quick statistics, I'll run through this fast, this presentation, there's an old adage that smaller, smaller schools are better, at our high school level, the smallest high school, worst grade with a D, middle school level, smallest school, worst grade with a D, at the elementary school, the smallest schools, Endy, Millimport, Dees, Oakboro, Choice, STEM, elementary, Dees, so the smallest schools don't automatically have the best educational opportunities for, for the kids, and then I was in the presentation where they gave you guys about the, what, 30, 30-some million dollars to upgrade the facilities, that's a lot of money, but when you look at it, I put the one page, Norwood East Admiral on Oakboro, you know, the previous Board was talking about closing those, and many people fought to keep them open, but now there's $4 million worth of repairs for those buildings that could have been closed, I'm glad Commissioner Lohhan asked the question about the odor at Norwood, and, because me and Mr. Lohan, I think it was 2014 when we went to that school tour, and they talked about the odor problems back in 2014, and someone told me, someone said, it's good, it's good that it's better, and not every day, okay, but it's still there some days, birth rates are low, ADMs, four traditional high schools in Stanley County, look at the numbers, 2014, 3,027 kids, 2018, 2,301 kids, lost 726 kids in 15 years, that is the equivalent to North Stanley High School students are now gone, and then there's the 10, the 10-year facility study, just for you guys to look at, that's just something for you guys to consider, and thank you very much for the rushing three minutes on this one.
Jeff didn't do public speaking, but I'm the Fire Chief of Southside, and we amended our taxes to have an increase, and we're here to answer any questions that y'all might have, y'all have a pack, packet of stuff, if y'all have any questions, we look over it, just give us a call, and we'll be glad to answer them.
All right, thank you, Jeff.
That's it.
Anybody else to speak on behalf of the budget? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Item number 15 tonight is the East Side Emergency Radio Tower Project Fund and Budget Amendments, presenter County Manager Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, as you know, the Board previously approved Motorola for the design build of this contract, that's moving forward, we're also getting ready to grade that site, the name of the contractor escapes me, but they're from Richfield, and Brian may know the name, what's the name of the contractor that's grading the site, Brian?
Daryl Cody.
Cody, Cody Brothers, thank you, so that, that part of it's moving forward as well, what we need to do this evening is create a project fund for that, that project, we're recommending that 1.2 million, or just over 1.2 million, be a set aside, 50,000 in professional services, and 1.15, 1 million for the construction, and that's the not-to-exceed cost from Motorola, and we're planning to use reserves that the Board has done a good job of accumulating over the past several years to do this, so we don't incur any debt service for this project, so I'd ask the Board's consideration of approving the project fund, as well as the budget amendments, we can move this project forward.
Thank you, County Manager, it's a pleasure of the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move that we approve the project fund ordinance and related budget amendments for the radio tower project.
Motion by Commissioner Morgan to approve the ordinance and related budget amendments, is there a second? A second by Commissioner Farr, is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. And, item number 16 tonight is the Stanley Community College Board of Trustees, presenter, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, and you see in your packet an attached request concerning the appointment of two members to the Stanley County Community Board, Stanley Community College Board of Trustees, the Board approves eight of those members, there's two this evening, whose terms are getting ready to expire, you can close, there are some roughly 20-some applications for the Board's review and consideration, be more happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Morgan.
I move to nominate Gerald Efferd and Joseph Bertleson, and close nomination.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lohan.
I don't think we should close nominations at this point, before I nominate someone, there's a few thoughts as a Commissioner that I think need to be shared, I think we have approximately 17 applications who've applied to serve on Stanley Communities Board, 11 applicants currently serve on other Stanley County Boards, or either they're in an elected office, I think two of them are from the school board that wishes to serve on the Community College Board, we have six applicants from citizens, like I say, that serve on current boards, ranging anywhere from DHHS Board, to Stanley Economic Development Commission Board, to Stanley County Airport Board, and like I said, to our elected school board members, as Commissioners, we need to ask ourselves, when we appoint Boards, should we select one, select someone who serves on a county board, or should we select someone who is not on a board, my opinion is that we need to involve as many citizens of Stanley County as possible on county boards, not just to select few to make the decisions, the more citizens who we can involve in the county board, the more ideas can be shared to improve our county, as a Commissioner, we need to be concerned about what is best for our county, and not be nominating citizens who may be our friends, or good old boy buddies. We need to stay away from selecting friends. to stay away from selecting friends, and we need to be selecting board members that are qualified, that can best serve our county. The next question we need to ask ourselves, are the applicants who are not serving on boards, who is best qualified to serve on Stanley Community College Board? And I've asked myself those questions, and I know Commissioner Morgan's made two recommendations, but I also nominate Doug Hughes, who has just finished his first term on Stanley Community College Board. Doug has been recommended by the Stanley Community College to serve a second term, and I do know that Doug has been very proactive in the electrical alignment program that Stanley Community College offers. Next, I would like to nominate Dr. Gerald Poplin, who has worked in the community college system. He's worked for Pfeiffer University, and he has owned several businesses that he has run and operated and managed, and I think Gerald is a qualified applicant for this board.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Any other nominations? Close nominations. All right. All right. The first nominee was Gerald Effer. All those wishing to vote in favor of Gerald Effer, please raise your hand. Next name up for nomination is Mr. Joseph Bertleson. All those in favor of Mr. Bertleson, please raise your hand.
Fellas, I'm disappointed. These are board members that are already serving on other boards, and I'm very disappointed in your decisions.
Third member up for nomination is Mr. Hagler. Doug Hughes, I'm sorry. Misread the handbrake. All those in favor of Mr. Hughes, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Mr. Poplin, Dr. Poplin, please raise your hand. Mr. Effer and Mr. Bertleson are the two nominations. Item 17, Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Presenter, Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have one current vacancy on the Stanley County Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Ms. Tice at the Central on the Council of Governments has requested that Mr. Jim Eisenheimer reconsidered for that appointment. His application is in the packet, and that will be for a one-year term expiring June 10, 2020. Be happy to answer your questions.
These are just one-year terms? All right. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Jim Eisenheimer to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee for one year. Term expires June 10.
Motion to accept Jim Eisenheimer as the nomination to the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Farr. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries six to one. Item number 18, Convention and Visitor Bureau Board Delegate Appointment. Again, presenter, Mr. Lucas.
Yeah, this is, item is for the Convention and Business Bureau. For the counties, one of the county's seats on that board is recommended that Ms. Dosia Swerengen, who's our Aggregative Center Director, be reappointed to that board.
It's a pleasure of the board. Motion by Commissioner Jordan. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Morgan. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 19, Reappointment to the Central Line of Workforce Development Board. Mr. Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is for the reappointment of two Stanley County Representatives to the Central Line of Workforce Development Board. Mr. Danny Poplin, who represents, currently sitting in the education seat of that board, and Ms. Candace Moffett for economic development. They'll be reappointed for a two-year term beginning July 1, 2019, through June 30, 2021. Andrew, is there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. It's a pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, I made the motion with Danny Poplin and Candace Moffett reappoint beginning July 1, 2019, to June 30, 2021.
Thank you. Motion to approve Danny Poplin and Candace Moffett to the Central Line of Workforce Development Board. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. Item number 20 is Consent Agenda. Are any questions or concerns about the consent agenda? Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Barbie. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Alman. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries, I'm sorry. Any opposed, no. Motion carries seven to zero. It brings us to public comment. I think we got through most of the public comment period. Nobody. All right. Board comments, we will start with Commissioner Lohan.
Thank you. Board appointments, I'm very disappointed in the fact that we made some good old boy appointments this afternoon. The members that were appointed already serve on boards, and what you told the citizens and the voters that you only want certain people on the boards that the county has. So, I'm very disappointed that we're loading boards up with just a very select few.
Thank you, Commissioner Lohan. Commissioner Jordan? Commissioner Barbie?
I too am disappointed in board appointments, mainly because we're not given enough time to check everyone out. When you have 22 appointees for one board and several other boards' appointees, I hope to see in the future that we have a 30-day notice so we can check these board members out and then find some better board members.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbie. Commissioner Farr?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Alman?
No comment.
Commissioner Morgan?
No comment.
It was my turn, but I forgot. I forgot I wanted to bring this up. We are, speaking of boards, we are actively seeking and have been seeking on the Consolidated Health and Human Services Board, members to fill certain roles. There are four state mandated roles that are currently empty and have always been empty since the day that board was put together. That is the field of professional engineer, physician, psychologist, and psychiatrist. I learned recently at a continuing education workshop that some of us attended, that as a member of the Board of Health, or as a commissioner, myself and Commissioner Barbie, we can make recommendations to this board for people who don't necessarily fill those job titles, but can fill the board's seat until such time as a licensed person can be found to take the seat. It is my hope that we're spread, we are actively looking for a physician, of course, but if you're not a physician, how about a physician's assistant? How about a trauma nurse? How about someone in the medical field? Because all the consumer fields are, consumer seats are filled. It's the medical professionals on the medical board that are absent. Same with a psychologist, psychiatrist, engineer. So, if anyone knows someone that works in these fields, by all means, please have them contact that board. You can contact me. You can contact Tyler. She can tell you how to apply. I would love to see those last four seats get filled, because they've been empty for a long time, and they're four fairly important seats, in my opinion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Thank you for your work on that and kind of finding that out for us, because that was not made clear when we did the original board appointments. So, we appreciate that. I don't have any comments tonight either, so if there is a, I will seek a motion to recess until Thursday, June 13. That's this coming Thursday at 5:00 p.m. A motion by Commissioner Jordan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Morgan. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, no. Motion carries. We'll stand in recess till Thursday, June 13 at 5:00 p.m. In the County Manager's Conference Room.